I'd like to call to order the September 3, 2024, regular meeting of the Village Board at 7:09 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Markwart.
Here.
Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Schenk.
Here.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
President Byrne gave prior notice that he may be delayed, and Trustee Oppenheim gave prior notice that he would not be in attendance.
Okay, is there a motion to appoint a chairman pro tem for this evening's meeting?
Motion to appoint Tom Cook, chairman pro tem.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, since we have a roll call and we have been called to order, would everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our next item is citizens wishing to address the board. Either one of you, come on.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Siddhartha Vua. I'm a senior at Vernon Hills High School, and I've been a Vernon Hills resident my entire life. I came to speak today, as recently I've been working with the village and Mr. Petriello, to raise awareness about an organization that I founded in late January called The Kit Outreach. The Kit Outreach is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization dedicated to reducing hygiene poverty in Chicagoland. And I chose this cause because in Chicago, there's over 68,000 homeless people who often worry about food and water and neglect their personal hygiene, which I thought was a very big issue, as I think hygiene, or access to hygiene should be a right and not a privilege. And to elaborate more on what The Kit Outreach does to solve this issue, we buy hygiene products in bulk, such as toothbrushes, toothpaste, soaps, and then they ship to my house, and I put them together in comprehensive hygiene kits. And then we distribute these hygiene kits to local townships, food pantries, and churches. So, so far, we've raised over $6,000 and donated more than 2,000 hygiene kits. And I wanted to thank Mrs. Brandle and Mr. Storito, the communications team here at the Village Hall, for helping feature us on Channel 4, which allowed us to raise more awareness about hygiene poverty in the local community of Vernon Hills. And it also helped promote our soccer camp, which is a big factor in our donations. Additionally, I had a great time participating at National Night Out. Thanks to the Village Hall, I was able to really interact with the community and hand out more flyers and raise more awareness. And to end this off, I wanted to talk about a event that I'm partnering with Vernon Hills High School on. So it's a glow-in-the-dark fun run on September 18, and it's open to all Vernon Hills High School students. It's going to be hosted at the Restolium Stadium, and we're sponsored by our school's National Honor Society. So there's going to be a lot of volunteering opportunities for high school students and high school staff. And all of the proceeds from the event go towards buying hygiene products for The Kit Outreach and making more kits. So again, I want to thank the village and Mr. Petriello for all their support, and I'd love to answer any of you guys' questions. Thank you.
Well, first of all, thank you for doing it. It's great to see people getting involved in the community, especially young people. So, thank you so much for everything you've done on behalf of all those people.
Thank you.
As, as a longtime educator, I'm asked that question many times. You know, what do I think of the kids today? And, you know, where's our country going and stuff like that? Here's a perfect example of, we're, we're in good shape, and, and our future's going to be in real good hands. So, thank you for everything you've done. Other comments?
Oh, yeah, I like, I think that's awesome, what you're doing. I have a question. Do you, with these kits, do you do like travel size, like toothpaste, or do you go with full size?
So, for toothpaste, we do two, like, medium-sized bars, and then we do like one toothbrush, one big bar of soap, and then hand sanitizer and a comb.
Interesting. What about, have you ever thought about approaching like a Target or Walmart or?
So, yeah, right now, we buy everything from retailers like Costco and mostly on Amazon also, but, I mean.
Oh, you buy it?
Yeah, we buy it. So, it depends kind of on what our recipients want. So it depends on like if they have restrictions or like what they need at the moment, so.
So would you be interested in like travel size types of items?
Yeah.
Okay. I have an idea. Why don't, I'm going to give you my card, okay? I, yeah, I have an idea. A company that hands out a ton of these types of samples, like dentists, toothpaste, toothbrushes.
Yeah.
They're huge. I'm going to connect you and I'll let you.
Yeah, thanks.
Let you pitch them about getting, you know, having them send you a bunch of samples that you could put together, kits.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you, um, first of all? Do you, I see the QR code.
Yeah.
That's for people if they want to get items to you?
The QR code is to our website, I believe. So that's for if people want to just check out what we do, or if they want to reach out to us and donate, or drop off supplies, as well as for townships to reach out to us if they need any kits.
So if someone wants to donate to you, they can go via that, that route to get your info?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from the board? All right, thank you. And again, thank you so much for what you're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
Chris, you want to?
Chris Meyer, 371 Cherry Valley. First, I wanted to compliment the police department on how quickly they got the roads closed after the storm, or during the storm. And also compliment the public works department for the fine job they did of getting the roads back open. I have a couple of questions. I thought the, the notice that went out said everybody needed to have all the branches and everything at the curb by this morning. And I thought it was all going to be picked up. Did I misunderstand? Because nothing's been picked up. And also, will a street sweeper be going through? Because the curbs are still full and would overwhelm the storm sewers.
I can address those questions for you. I believe the deadline for the branch pickup will be this Friday.
Oh, Friday.
So our crews are still working through this week to pick everything up. And then I, I think a street sweeping within the next day or two, is that correct?
Yes, we'll, the, the street sweeping is going to be scheduled for this week as well. We needed to get most of the debris out of the street first, otherwise it would just clog up the machine.
Right.
And I will just note that while we had the deadline to have all your branches out by this Friday, it'll still take several days for us to actually get everything cleared and out of the way. We, we only have one chipper, and, and it's a large town, a lot of, lot of debris, so.
Yeah, we had, we had a lot of damage in our subdivision. I also wanted to thank the police department because a lot of us were outside after the storm, and the squads were going through the subdivision and asking if everybody was okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Yeah, and the other, the other big thing a lot of people miss is the amount of time you have to get out there taking down trees that are broken in half. That takes quite a bit of work to, to get those before you start picking up the ones that are actually completely down, so.
Exactly.
Yeah. Again, just, that's going to come up in a little bit, the discussion of that, so. Any other citizens? Okay, then next would be the village manager with the storm recap, in fact?
Thank you, Trustee Cook. Well, Ms. Meyer's right on point. We had, as everyone knows, a very bad storm that came through the western portion of the village a week ago tonight. I wanted to just give a quick update to the board and the community on our response efforts and provide my thanks to our public works department for their, their quick response. Some of our western communities actually experienced what's called a microburst. I don't know if we technically had that here in Vernon Hills, but we certainly saw the impacts of that. We had several downed trees and tree limbs blocking roadways. We had flooded streets from debris clogging catch basins. We had some local power outages, and so it was a very, very quick storm that had a very immediate impact. Our public crews were dispatched. They were on scene within 20 minutes of the storm actually happening. Within a few hours, roadways were cleared, and localized flooding was removed through catch basin clearing. And then over the course of the next week, our crews worked tirelessly to continue to make our parkway safe by cutting down hanging tree limbs, taking the chipper around and, and taking care of downed tree limbs, and then continuing to move large debris from the streets, which eventually will be cut through and, and doing a street sweeping. So, just did want to pass along my thanks to our public works department. They did put a lot of effort this past week and continue into this week. We have received so many compliments from all of our residents over the past week, just so impressed with how quick our response was and how professional our crew has been. Also do want to extend a thank you. We did have some assistance. It was a very large storm. And we also had help from the Vernon Hills Park District, the Vernon Township Crew, and the Village of Libertyville. They all provided help last week with chipping crews and, and tree maintenance crews to help us with the effort. And then lastly, I was asked by our public works department to thank our community. Within minutes of the storm, not only were our crews out there dispatched taking care of the downed tree limbs, but we had residents on the street side by side with them, helping to clear brush, helping our neighbors that were in need, and our, our crew was very proud to see that in our community. So, I wanted to extend that thanks to, to everyone in town, in town. And then lastly, as a reminder, if you do have downed branches from the storm, please have those to the curb by this Friday, and our crews will be coming around over the course of the next week or two to collect those and, and get rid of them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I can't echo that enough, that the work everybody did was incredible. Because it was quite a quick and strong storm, so.
I've lived here 50 years, and I don't think I've seen anything that violent that quickly.
Well, yeah, I, because I venture out onto the golf course occasionally. I was, I've never seen that much tree damage on the golf course. Let's put it this way, the 30-some years I've been playing golf there, the first 30 years total, there wasn't as much as was done that day.
Right.
So, I mean, it just, a lot. Except a couple of the trees I wanted to go down didn't. Couple of them that I wanted to go did, but there's a couple still standing that I was hoping were gone, but. Okay, anything else from any of the other board members on this? Okay, Director Lyons, is this just a information thing? Okay, okay, all right. Then no other speaking parts from staff? Okay, then next item would be omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through G? If I could, could we pull C and vote separately on it? C, okay. Okay, then is there a motion for A through B and D through G?
Motion to approve A through B and.
A, B, and D through G.
And D through G on the omnibus vote.
Second. Motion second. Any comments, questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries.
Item C, approval and passage of ordinance 2024-114, an ordinance authorizing approval of expenditures to Vernon Hills Park District for 50% of the cost of fairground plaza concrete replacement. You had a question about that one, trustee?
No, because I work for the Park District.
Oh, so you, you just pulled that. Okay, gotcha. Okay, okay. All right. Then if there are no questions about that, is there a motion to approve ordinance 2024-114?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
I'm staying.
And Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries.
Any unfinished business? No? Okay, then under new business, first item is approval and passage of ordinance 2024-116, and ordinance amending and granting an extension of ordinance 2022-100, which granted a special use and associated site plan and architectural plan approval for a daycare center at 2 East Philip Drive. Director Jennings.
Thank you. The owner and developer for this property, GW Properties, received approvals back in October of 2022 for a special use associated with some variation, and a variation for the signage. The construction commenced and, and just was recently completed. At the conclusion of the construction, the original operator elected not to go forward with the project. The owner and developer began to market the property, market the daycare, to new operators and did find an operator, BrightPath, who is, who has proposed to take over the operation. The details for BrightPath, which are summarized in the staff memo, were consistent with the original approval. However, since the special use did not commence operation at the end of construction with the original operator, we determined that the, the best course of action would be to formally request an extension of the special use to allow operation after that one-year deadline in the code, and at the same time, clean up the original ordinance and, and clearly identify a new operator. So with that, Mitch Golds from GW Properties is here. The ordinance, as I said, would do two things. It would grant an extension of the one-year period to commence operation of the special use, and then it would clearly identify BrightPath as the new operator. So with that, Mr. Golds is here if you have questions for him.
Hi there again.
Yeah.
Hi.
If you could state your name and that for the record.
Mitch Golds, GW Properties. Here to answer any questions. The answer to the test where, you know, building's done, took, took a bit longer than we'd all had hoped. The operator had ran into some challenges in that proceeding. We had multiple backups, and we, we've secured a very large corporate entity named BrightPath. And they're looking to, they're very eager to get in and open as soon as possible, so back to where we had hoped to be a few months ago.
So basically, it's almost zero change from what was.
Exactly. I mean, it's evident in the staff report. I mean, this is, we're happy to be here before you guys again, but it's, it's, nothing's changing. You know, aside from signage and whatnot, site plan, everything's done. We've passed all of our final inspections, so it's, it's really just formality.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Did you guys seek out BrightPath? Did they seek out you? Did you guys seek out BrightPath?
Uh, we, it was a combination of, they're coming to the market. They have, they're, they're one of the largest operators across the world. They're based in, in Canada. They have hundreds of, I think, over 1,000 locations, but we, we sought them out, and they have been coming into the market with some other facilities in the Coglin area. So we've, as soon as we, we notified a few of the competitors in the market, they were all very quick to jump on this opportunity to, to come in here.
You had a list, probably.
Excuse me?
You had a list?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's not like there's 500 groups that are credible in that, in that sphere. So we had multiple options. We picked the one that was best in, best in class and corporate, and they're, they've flown in, and we're, we're at the final stages now and very eager to get started, so.
Any other comments or questions from the board? If not, is there a motion to approve ordinance 2024-116? Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Last chance, comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. I will note, unrelated, Ace Pickleball is looking to open early December, so please let Trustee Oppenheim know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Early December?
That's their, they're under construction now. We're going to be completing some facade improvements that will make it look very.
That's your property too, right?
That's ours, yeah. That's why I noted, many of you may remember me, but they're, I texted them on the way here. They're, they're looking to open early, early December, right when the weather's.
Park lot looks good.
Yeah, the park lot's good, the building looked good, the whole, that, you know, it's been a long time coming, and there's others that have added in to some improvements on the center, but we're, we're excited to see it done. And I know that a lot of people are excited to have them open, so. It's early December, so we'll be sure to have a certain kind of.
Good.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll have, we'll have to have a village, a village event or something, so. Thank you very much, Chris.
All right, next item is approval and passage of ordinance 2024-117, an ordinance granting a special use permit for a private automobile club, Moto Escape North Shore, to be located at 647 Lakeview Parkway. Director Jennings.
Thank you. Moto Escape North Shore was recently in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission with a request just in October, excuse me, August, to occupy the western unit of the, the building, the Loomcraft Building, also houses Vernon Hills Gymnastics. The unit's currently vacant. They're proposing a private automobile club, which would offer primarily climate-controlled storage with a lounge area for members to be able to meet. They're proposing 24/7 access with two-factor authentication for members. And beyond that, there would be very little change exterior in the building. The issues from the Planning and Zoning Commission relatively minor. Cleanup of landscaping to match the original landscape plan. The one item of note from the commission review was safety of the two different users. There's an entrance at the northeast corner of the building for Vernon Hills Gymnastics. The parents have a tendency to line up in that area and sort of clog the drive. That would make things a little bit difficult for the members of the, of the automobile club to access their entrance. So, the condition from the Planning and Zoning Commission wasn't very specific, but the purpose of it was to ensure some type of signage would be added so that both of those uses could coexist safely. So, that's the reason the, the staff modified it slightly, just to clarify what the intent was. So, Mr. Brad Kaluzna from Moto Escape North Shore is here if you have questions. But the, the ordinance is submitted for review and approval.
Okay. Yeah, come on, come on up and just state your name and that for the record, please.
Sure, Brad Kaluzna. And Matt Otten.
Okay. And you both represent?
Both, okay.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Schenk?
So I was looking at the, um, the planning and zoning comments. So, if a member wants to do repairs on the car, is, right now, are you planning on just for storage? And is that, because in Atlanta, it seems like they can do that. They have community tools, and so is that something that we probably need to do, give approval for, right? If they start doing like oil changes or tire rotations or, you know, some wrenching on their car?
So the way the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation handled that was, they referenced the entire testimony from the hearing in a condition of approval, basically holding the business to the testimony that they provided. So they had indicated at the public hearing that they would not allow repair, and therefore they would need to return to request permission to expand the nature of the business.
I thought I saw something in there that like in six months, they might come and request that. Is that correct, or?
I believe that was a comment from the commission.
That was a comment from the commission, if they wanted to come in six months, okay. And are you doing stacks, like lifts for storage?
Yeah, all of the initial storage will be at ground level.
But then with room to add lifts?
The ceiling height in the building provides enough space for that.
Do we have to regulate that when you put them on lifts?
We would have, any change like that would go through both the building apartment and countryside.
So there's inspections there on a, some kind of frequency?
Correct, at least the annual from countryside.
And emissions and exhaust and all that mitigation, is that with all the venting and ventilation systems, is you, you enhance that or using existing?
There's, there's sufficient HVAC exhaust fans in the building today from the previous tenant.
How do you guys determine that calculation of what, what you're producing inside the garage? Like if eight cars are starting up and warming up and then pulling out, it's going to create X amount of exhaust. How do you guys determine that it's sufficient?
Or makeup system.
What's that?
Also to a makeup system. What goes in has to go out, equalize.
Okay.
But they do have renovations that would be required, fairly minimal cosmetic upfront. They will need a permit for this. We've given, through the staff recommendation, we've given some advance warning that they're going to need both countryside as well as the county. The drainage was one concern, just having, being able to capture any materials that hit the floor, washing off vehicles, leaks, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
The other item that came up was the number of trickle chargers and whether or not the, the building would have the electric capacity to handle that. But the, at this point, they haven't been reviewed for permit, but we gave them fair warning that these things are coming their way.
Yeah, 150 cars, you said? Is that what?
Closer to, probably a little bit less than that.
Little less than that, yeah. And then with the gymnastics drop-off and stuff, we'll just have to figure out just how to mitigate that, because of the blockage and.
Yep.
I'm still not sure. I've heard an answer to your question about how was it determined that the HVAC for the previous person is sufficient for yours?
Well, I think we'll probably have to rely on the recommendation from the fire department on, on making sure that we have enough.
So we'll have somebody inspect that and make sure it's.
Yeah, during the permit process, they'll have to provide documentation of what's there for this use, specific to this storage use.
Why Vernon Hills? Just curious.
It's a great spot. It's right in the middle of a lot of different villages, easy access to the airport. People want to park their cars, get in the highway, go for a drive. Why not, right? It's part, right in the middle of.
Well, I could find use, yeah.
Absolutely right on that. Other comments or questions from the board? Aye? Okay, then is there a motion to approve ordinance 2024-117?
Motion to approve 2024-117.
Okay, motion is second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, you're on.
Aye. Okay, we're, Mayor, to bring you up today, we're at item three under new business. Um. Item three under new business, approval and passage of ordinance 2024-118, an ordinance granting a special use permit and certificate of building and use conversion for Children's Performing Arts Center, Roots, to be located at 656 to 660 Hawthorne Center. Director Jennings.
Thank you. This item request has a, it's a two-part request, is a conversion certificate request as well as a special use permit. The business was introduced to the committee as a whole at the meeting on July 23, where the committee discussed and recommended approval of the conversion certificate pending the special use review. So at this time, the business has had their special use hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission at their August meeting. Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed and has recommended approval, subject to some conditions, primarily that the exterior, the exterior work will be finished. This is unfinished space that was originally constructed in 2014. And as the, as we learned by working with Pure Bar in the adjacent unit, the exterior of the building does require some work to have a finished appearance. So that was the, the primary condition of approval. Just to provide a little bit of background, Roots is a performing arts school that has an existing location in Deerfield. They will be taking the remainder of the unused space next to Pure Bar and under the AMC Theater. And the, they intend to operate very similar to Deerfield, to the Deerfield location. It's a slightly smaller space, so at a slightly scaled down. But I, Mr. Mac Open from Roots is here and can describe the business in, in better detail than I can. But again, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of it, and, and that is how it is phrased in the ordinance that's in the packet. So, Mr. Gopin, if you could come up and say hello to the, to the board?
Hello, everybody. Matt Gopin from Bannockburn, just on the street. Like, we're trying to open a second location, similar to what we do in Deerfield. It's about two-thirds dance, roughly a third theater. And I realize that's a whole, but there's, there's a very small percentage of, of other program, but, but predominantly a dance and theater. Our major, major age ranges are, I'd say between three and 13 is kind of our sweet spot. The majority is probably more in like the five to.
Where are you located right now? Deerfield?
Yeah, in, uh, Lake Hook in Waukegan. Like, right on the corner. So, we found we're just far enough from Vernon Hills that we don't, we don't get much of Vernon Hills. We get a few, Lake Forest and, um, Lincolnshire, but not, not very much Vernon Hills, so we thought this was a natural progression, where a lot of people in the area are familiar with us, they've, 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 they've even asked us to open in this area, or like, Libertyville, and, uh, we just thought this was a, a perfect opportunity to, to kind of expand into the surrounding area.
And again, this is a space that has not been used since it was built 10 years ago so far. It's good to be using this space. Alright.
Jesus.
Mayor?
I'm sorry. Oh, oh my God, I get it on purpose, I started yelling, if you, if you'll be out of here.
Anyone follow that?
I didn't, I didn't follow it.
Sorry, we, we can't understand you.
Repeat, Roger.
Sorry, Mayor, did you have a, a comment on this, on the, um, Children's Performing Arts Center?
Do I?
No, I was just wondering, yeah.
No, I mean, it'd be nice, it'd be great to have the space filled.
Okay.
You know?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, it's a, it's something I would think people would gravitate to. If you had any conversations with, uh, Centennial about this, the owners of the mall, you must have.
Me? Uh, we have a, a signed lease, yeah.
Yeah, they have a signed lease with Centennial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, why don't we just move forward unless staff's got any question?
No, neither of the trustee's.
No, okay, yeah, no, this is, this is a, this is, um, uh, uh, already a, a, an ordinance, so, uh, is there a motion then to approve ordinance 2024-118? Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Takaka.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tim Cook.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Welcome to town. Okay, um, next under, uh, communications, anybody have anything in terms of communication?
Yeah, I got, I got one.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is, uh, Jermaine to Indian Creek, and, uh, you know, going back in time, this is, you know, it's something that, I remember having, it was quite a bit of discussion with Dave Brown, but, uh, periodically, there, there's a real exposure there, as far as potential flooding. If we get, you know, the 100-year rain, or God forbid, everybody gets 500-year rains, and, uh, you know, it's about a, I think it's about a three-mile stretch, you know, coming down, you know, uh, past, uh, Port Clinton slash, uh, Prairie Road, and it involves other jurisdictions besides us, but, uh, in essence, uh, I called Mike Warner, you know, who's, uh, now with Gay Walt Hamilton, and I, I just got a report from, and I sent it to, to Mike and Chris, and then I'm, I'm sure they'll share it with the rest of the board. It's something to look at, because it can be a major issue for, for our homes, certainly along that creek, if we get a crazy flooding situation. So anyway, it's just something, you know, maybe we'll put on the agenda in a couple of weeks and kick it around, but, it, it's like, it's gonna involve other, other taxing bodies, okay?
Yeah.
It's not just something we would do without other taxing bodies involved, but, and then when you get a chance, you know, you'll read Mike Warner's report, you know, and it's, it's pretty informative, but, uh, that's all I want for a future meeting.
Okay. Um...
Any comments on that, or?
No, thank you, Mayor, we'll, we'll take a look at the email, and we'll, um, I'll discuss with Chris, and we'll, we'll come up with a game plan on, uh, when's an appropriate, uh, direction to, to bring this back for discussion.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't gonna happen overnight, trust me.
Correct.
But I, Mike already did, he did kind of a nice, uh, guesstimate on it, okay? Alright, that's all I've got.
Okay, um, anybody else? If not, Assistant Manager Petrol?
Thank you, Trustee Cook. As the board will recall, during the July 23rd board meeting, Vernon Hills High School Principal, Dr. Guim, shared that Vernon Hills High School was entering its 25th year, and to commemorate this moment, boulevard banners were created by the high school, and Public Works recently placed these banners throughout the Vernon Hills Athletic Complex and on village roadways leading to the high school, including Lakeview, Fairway, Cougar, and Nike. And as persons visit the Vernon Hills Athletic Complex, uh, be sure to safely look up when you can, and check out the banners. Uh, and just on behalf of, uh, staff, we'd like to say congratulations to Vernon Hills High School on 25 years, and as we saw today with one of our students, uh, you can see they are, uh, producing some exemplary, uh, people that are coming forward, young leaders, and we're proud of all our Cougars, past, present, and future.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, it, when you see a Friday night football game or other things like that, it, it gives, you know, having your own high school gives you such a sense of community, and it's, uh, it's an incredible thing. And those banners look nice, thank you. Any other communication? If not, then, uh, is there a motion to adjourn and go to closed session? There will be no committee of the whole tonight?
For purposes of review of executive session minutes.
Okay, for purpose of review of executive session minutes. Is there a motion to that effect?
Motion to approve, then.
Second.
Yeah, it's a motion to adjourn, to go, motion to adjourn, to go to closed session, to review minutes.